This is the July 25, 2018, meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Mr. Secretary?
Okay, Forni, are they here yet? Yes, they are.
Good evening. I'm Lucy Biscopio, and I'm representing Baldwin Electric. I'm representing Mr. Forni in regards to, you know, it's for the installation of a generator.
Could you stand just a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, we're seeking a variance of six feet for the installation of a generator. And I believe you have pictures that we've submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so, the proposed location of the generator is to be put on the, on a wall, to be five feet from, away from the structure, that there was a window there. And then, we have some pictures that show that there is no, it's a wooded area on the side. And then, the propane tanks would be going against the wall, but in the back, which are not seen from the street. And that's another view where the generator will be going here and looking forward, it's really not an obstruction.
And that's the closest you can place the generator to the home?
Yes. Because, as you can see, on, it's on the side of the garage, but there is a window there, so that's why they, it wants to go about five feet.
So, could you help us with the code?
I can. I visited the site, I was with there with the electrician, and you have to be five feet from an opening door or window, and you need to be 10 feet from a propane tank or tanks. So, that's where that number replacement came from. The positioning on top of the wall afforded it protection from the driveway, so no one would drive into the location of it. I do have, if you would like to see the propane code rules, if you'd like to pass them around.
The full picture is good.
It is, I visited the site and looked at both of them.
I'm sorry, did you have any more that you wanted to say?
No, unless you have questions.
No. So, one of the neighbors, Stephen Garcia, has written a letter to the board with a concern about the installation. I was wondering, are you familiar with this at all?
No.
So, you've never, okay, you've never seen this before.
This is the first I hear about it.
So, you obviously don't know where the Garcias live in proximity to this. So, you showed us the, the one side of the house where the generator was going to be installed, and you showed us, I think, the screening that exists close to the property line there. Okay.
Do you know what the address of the house that is on the side where the wooded area is?
No, that is, not, um...
So, it's 104, 106, so, it must be...
Right. So, you said Garcia?
Yes.
Garcia, seems it's 104. I'm looking at the list of the notification that I had assigned.
So, they received the proper notification. Right, okay.
When was the, well, I did not see the notice, we don't. Was it for the first meeting, or it was after this?
This is dated July 25th is actually the receipt date.
Okay.
The Garcias, I think I understand, are not here this evening, is that correct? Okay, let the record show that the Garcias are not here. We do have their letter. We've heard from the building department about compliance with code. Are there any other questions, Brian?
Yeah, I want to bring, with regard to the propane tanks, the Garcia letter is saying that they don't want to see the propane tanks, but looking at the, the, sure, but the plan, it's showing the propane tanks in the corner between the garage and the structure. It seems to me that we're only giving, if we grant the variance, it's only for the generator.
Only for the generator.
Yeah, the propane tanks look like where they are is allowed.
Propane tanks do not need a variance.
So, they don't have any issue, they can't have any issue with the propane tanks. So, looking at their letter, we could disregard that part of the letter and just look about the generator.
The generator is...
Okay. I thought so, I just want to get that into the record.
Did you say that the generator is going on the wall?
No.
It's behind the wall.
Behind the wall.
Correct.
Yeah, it's behind the wall.
Setback from the wall would be a proper terminology.
Do you, do you have any idea, make a guess about how far the structure on Garcia's property is from the border of the applicant's house?
Honestly, when I was on site looking that way, you could barely make out the structure. So, it's going to be the minimum of the setback at that point, so it would probably be 45 feet, unless they had a variance when they built the house to put it closer, but it's quite a distance.
You can't see it from the picture that was provided.
And I might add, it's also shielded by evergreen trees, which you're going to retain.
This is from the notice that was sent out.
Looking at, looking at this picture, with the Garcia house being over there.
Same, yes.
It looks like it's pretty well...
Correct locations.
I don't know what else we're doing.
The placement of the structure is pretty much...
Yeah, I think that's really far.
But there are no evergreens here. The reality of the situation.
No more than he would see a car in the driveway.
Okay. Here's the property. There's something else here.
And these are not large structures, the generators, they're less than three feet in height.
Okay.
Anything else on the side?
No.
No. Other than Ken, I would just point out that, just looking at the trees, if they're talking about visibility, they're all deciduous trees, so you would have, whatever, three or six months, you would see it.
Good. Side, anything else? Good, okay. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. I'll make a motion. I move that the Forni application, the installation of a generator that requires a six-foot side-yard variance...
It's eight feet, please.
There's two variants. Side yard and the combined side yard.
Eight for the side yard and six for the combined side.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
It's, I mean, according to the application, there was a, there were two, there was a minimum yard is 20, they're asking, well, they're asking for how much now, is it 12 foot?
We were asking for 12 originally.
And how much are they asking for now?
It still should be the 12, has not moved from original location.
No, wait, wait, it's 12 feet off the line, so they need eight.
Right, eight feet side yard variance.
Eight, eight feet.
And then, a minimum, then the combined side yard minimum, which is required 50, 40 foot, 44 foot is proposed, so they need a six-foot variance from the combined minimum side yard.
Correct. Right. Okay. So, eight-foot side yard, six-foot combined, is that correct? Yep, okay, right. The applicant is in compliance with local town code. The generator placement cannot be closer than the location that has been selected. There will be no change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means or methods. The variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And though self-created, we have the closest neighbor who has registered a concern, but there is, in the estimation of the board, sufficient screening to minimize the impact on that neighbor. You would have six months to start, one year to complete. Are there any requirements for, any surveys? No. Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
Evening.
Hi.
Hi, John Nogen, Marcella Nogen Architects. I have the owner, Craig Hammetts, here, if there's any questions for him. We are looking for a side yard variance of 7.44 feet and a 35-foot yard, side yard setback. It's on the right side of the property. There is, the existing structure is already in that side yard setback. There's a single-story structure that is 7.44 feet off the corner of your building on top of that for a second story. It's for a master bedroom. Down below, the existing structure is a family room. A couple of facts about the house, it's 33, the existing house is 33, 32 square feet. We are in 14 square feet on the second floor there, above the old, above the single-story space, for a total of 37, 46 square feet. There is a cantilever in the back, it amounts to 40 square feet of additional lot coverage. I don't know if you guys want me to go through the drawings, you know, briefly. If you take a look here, you can see the shaded-in area is the variance, is the new second-story structure. Shaded-in area here is the new lot coverage, which is really pretty high. I'll bring you the pictures, bring them closer to you guys. The new structure is going to go on top here of this, of this piece, where I'll extend the fireplace up. Again, it's going to go in here, and then it's behind the tree here.
You're not increasing the footprint?
Well, technically, 40 square feet, yes, on the second floor, with the cantilever, yeah.
Oh, because of the cantilever.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, we're not changing the foundation, we're just building up top.
Right.
View to the neighbor, which is actually elevated here, I'm taking this picture from up here to the neighbor, and the neighbor is about 100...
Hold the mic, because we don't have our secretary tied, and we want to get this recorded.
Sorry, I was trying to give you guys a better view.
Well, you can take the mic out and carry it if you want.
Start dancing around.
You have two more arms.
The, you know, the new addition's going to go up here, view to the neighbor is over there. Again, I was telling you that, that we're up elevated here, and it's about, I Google mapped it, it's about 100, 120 feet away to the house. Elevation-wise, this is our addition, this piece right here. Okay, that's where we're putting some more decorating, fixing up the front as well. And here's the addition right here, here's the little cantilever, and this is our, is our second-story addition, which would be the right side.
How far out does the cantilever go?
30 inches. We have, we have a fireplace that we have to get around, we don't know how big that, if it steps in, so I'm assuming the worst-case scenario, which would be 30 inches, I would bet that once we rip everything out and see what's there, it's probably going to come down to somewhere around 24 inches.
And it looks like there's one window on the side facing the neighbor.
That's correct, that's correct. There's closets here, and the fireplace, we have to extend it, we can't get that second window to work there on the other side of the bed.
That photo that you have of the door between the neighbors, that's on the north side?
This is on, it would be the right, that's right here, it's on the right side here. So, you go down the hill, is that the north side?
North side.
That is the north side, correct. Uh, did not, no, we didn't go to architectural review yet. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we want to make sure we can work things out here first.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, you got a couple of mathematical errors in your calculations, which I corrected, I'll get into our secretary, she can print, give you copies if you need them. Minor stuff, doesn't affect the application at all, but...
Thank you, thank you.
We'd like to keep the record straight, because...
Yeah, I need second eyes.
Well, in the future, if it's reviewed and somebody sees it, it's better that it's correct than it has to be corrected later on.
Minor stuff. Be fixed right away.
One question I have, and it's going to be to our attorney, the generator that's being relocated, is that legal, has it been, is there a CO on it?
No, we, we haven't determined the place for it yet. We want to move it away from the current location because it is too close to the house and set off the carbon monoxide detectors, and the fire department came and everything, so we need to relocate it further from the house.
But it looks like here it's going to be outside the setback, so you're going to need a variance for that.
Well, I, we're going to find a home for it where it works. No, we're not going to go for a variance on that, I will put it on, I will resubmit the drawings to show it in a different place. I don't want it to be an issue.
Because if you had to come back again for another variance, it's just another fee and another everything, it's better to do it all at once if you can.
Unfortunately, I don't have it on record for, for a variance today. I mean, I don't know if you guys can address it?
There's not notice.
No.
No, it's not noticed.
Yeah, I, we will find a home for it away from the house, so that we don't have a second occurrence of the carbon monoxide going off. We even had the generator company say there's, changed their rules to how close they want them to the house now, because of the scenario, so...
Again, I'm trying to save some grief later on.
I appreciate it.
If we can figure this out now, but if not, that's, so be it.
We're going to find another home for it.
Okay.
No problem. You could move the detector.
Yeah, no. It was actually a very scary situation.
Can I actually repeat to that, the current zone?
Microphone, please.
Just for the zoning board to be aware, I've done a lot of research since this occurrence at my house. This was done to code, everything passed code with the building inspector, everything like that. These generators are too close to the house. I've been in contact with Generac, who now says they're revising what their recommendations are, even though the codes are still five and six feet.
Right.
But, this is all the way it should be. This almost really harmed my family, so my feeling is that the generator, when we relocate it, we'll leave it within the building setbacks, but it has to be as far from, these things have to be as far from the houses.
The location you're talking about is currently behind the garage, or that's...
In that little corner there, that's correct.
Current corner where it is. Well, what happened was it was a northeaster, and all of the, the storm was continually blowing the exhaust from the generator right into that corner, and it was going right into the house. And about, it's the first time it was ever used, it was out for about a year, goes on every Sunday for 10 minutes, but within three hours, it was enough to fill the basement.
What?
It was brand-new, it was brand-new.
It's serviced regularly by a registered service.
The adjustments are very, you know, minimal, minimal to make a huge change.
Yeah, it's been looked at, and everything is considered fine with the generator, but just, everybody taking care of their own families.
Does the generator have to be moved because of the addition? It's because of the...
No, no.
No, it does just want to be...
Tony noticed that on the plan, it's located in an area that would require that.
The only concern would be, you know, if they were not within code where they wanted to move it, and the board could, but I don't think you need a condition, since we don't know where they're putting it at this point, they'd obviously have to get, I believe, building department approval to...
We'll find a zoning compliant home for it.
No, my only question was about the variance situation, if we, if we could save them some time, but if you don't have a location just picked out yet, then that's what you have to do. Okay.
But you still need to get a permit.
Absolutely. And inspector.
Good here? Good here? I'm sorry, did I ask if anyone here speaks to this?
I don't know if you did or not, I'll ask you carefully.
Yeah. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this application? Let the record note that I show that there isn't. I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Would like to make a motion?
Okay.
I move that we grant the variance, the side yard variance of, going around eight feet?
7.44.
You need 108?
Make it eight.
Eight feet side yard variance for a second-story addition on a pre-existing non-conforming portion of the residence. Granting the variance will create no undesirable sign of impact on the neighborhood, there is no feasible method of legal variance to achieve the benefit of putting the second story on this portion of the home. The variance is not substantial, there's no one, no neighbors have come forward in opposition. Granting the variance will have no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and although it's self-created, it's a minimal variance, as before said. So, you'd have six months to start, one year to complete. And I move that we grant the variance.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Have your...
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Michael?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Michael Testa. I'm here tonight with Mr. Flicker regarding legalizing a porch enclosure. The porch was built with the original house back in 1952 as an open porch, the roof exists currently, that was there during the original construction, and had a slab on grade which was there already. In 2002, the Flickers made a decision to enclose that porch as, to try to get a three-season sunroom, and as a result, they enclosed the porch, and they built a small patio with a little retaining wall there, that is basically a garden wall that holds up the patio on one side. In regards to the application tonight, the property is unique in the fact, this actually fronts on three different streets. There's three legal front yards on this property that have to meet front yard setback criteria, and we are actually asking for a side yard application relief for the distance to the property line on the northerly side yard property line. We've calculated out the coverages and the FAR, and we're well short of those requirements, so we don't need a variance for any of those applications. However, the side yard setbacks for the porch enclosure and the stone wall and patio do require a waiver based on the current zoning of the town. Previously, in your past zoning that was in effect, you were allowed to extend the degree of the nonconformity, long as you kept the line of the nonconformity the same. That was in fact changed by F. P. Clark back in 2008, and as a result of that change, now it does, it does require the waiver. The Flickers are in the process of trying to sell their house, it's on the market right now, and obviously, this is an item that we're trying to legitimize for them so they could get the appropriate COs. And I could try to answer any of your questions if, if I can.
Could you perhaps just explain the circumstances around how this occurred? I understand what occurred, I don't understand exactly.
Yeah, obviously, I was not around, but I could, Mr. Flicker, if you want, just kind of give a little breakdown.
Yeah, about, I think it was 2002, we decided to change the screened-in porch only because no one ever used it, and we hired a carpenter, and we basically only took the screens out, we put some sheet rock in, some insulation windows, but we left the floor, we left the roof, and then we put a small patio off the back. I, I never even thought about CO or anything like that at the time. And, you know, there's plenty of room on all the sides, but I was wrong there.
Didn't want you to get a building permit or to file...
Because we never really, you know, we just, we used the existing footprint and just put sheet rock instead of screen, and, and obviously, I was wrong.
We did have the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to meet with all the members of the surrounding property owners, and enclosed a new packet as an actual letters of no, no problems from those adjacent neighbors. We interviewed six of them, and that's went well beyond the radius that was advertised by the town in the public notice. We've had licensed electrician go in to legitimize, there's a ceiling fan, and that certainly was part of the requirement. We, a brand-new updated survey is also attached in your file.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? The record showed there isn't.
The stone patio was not there, you did that when you enclosed?
When I enclosed, we added a smaller patio with it.
You know how, how far the residents, the adjacent residents over here is from the patio?
Is that the McDonald's?
This is the one on the northerly side.
Your patio that you put in, it's here.
Now, this would be...
It's down low here, yeah.
Oh, it's...
It's down in this corner here.
Is the house that...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
A good 100, 100 feet plus.
I couldn't hit a picture, which is that far? Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to pass you a mic.
Yes, sir, Tom.
In your, in your letter, your breakdown, you're saying that the proposed distance on the sun porch is 28.85 feet.
25.85.
But on the plan, it's 25.85.
It's 25.85.
That the one we're using?
Yes, sir, 25.85.
28 is not, that's a misrecognition.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll take that off. And the other ones are okay. That was the only question, I knew I had a question, but I circled it on the plan, that the two numbers didn't match.
Yeah, that was a surveyed number.
But the 20, the 25.85...
25.85 is the surveyed number, yes.
That's the only question I have there.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Would like to make a motion?
I'll make an motion. I move that we approve the application of Richard and Judith Flicker to Joan Drive, for these side yard variances. 9.15 feet for the center, and a 35 is required. Setback to the wall for the, which wall?
That's the only, the closest point of the stone wall, sir.
On the stone wall, all right. Setback to the stone wall would be a 20-foot variance where 35 is required, and setback to the patio would be 18 where 35 is required, for the, okay, make it 10 the first one, instead of 9.15.
Before we go on, what were those numbers again? I'm not, I'm not getting the same number you're giving. I hate to, I hate to put in on you.
Get it right.
Yeah. That's the variance. You're talking about the variance amount, or the, or some of the, the amount that are going to be setback?
The variance, right.
The variance amount.
The variance amount.
Yeah.
6.15 and 9.15.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, 10, 20, and 18.
Good. Sorry about that.
For the, the following reasons. The, the porch, the enclosed porch is in fact the, in the same place and location that... that an unenclosed porch was previously located. It's been used that way for many years. And the property owner made the change inadvertently without realizing that he needed to get a building permit for the enclosure, for the complete enclosure of the outdoor porch and to make it an indoor porch. All the neighbors in the area have written in approving the requested variance, variances. The patio is well sheltered by a number of trees. And the granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. No other feasible method is available to the applicant which is likely to achieve the benefit being sought. The requested variances are not substantial. The proposed area, the variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Although self-created, the, the fact that that was self-created is outweighed by the minimal disturbance and effect that the structures have on the neighborhood and the other factors involved. So for these reasons, I move that we grant the application. It's all in place, nothing needs to be, no surveying. You have your variance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Bill Spade, architect representing the Lees. A second, I have a handout for you. A set of photographs and key plans for direction of photograph. And this is, hopefully, evaluating this. So again, I'm the architect working with the Lees. The Lees' home was originally constructed in the early 30s on a larger-than-acre lot. They're in the 1A zone. But the lot fronts is a very shallow lot in that sense, fronting Ludlow Drive. And so presently, the home extends into the, the front yard setback and is very tight to the rear yard setback to begin with. And I've diagrammed here on the site plan, orange is the outline of both the existing home and an addition that we are presently doing. The green dash lines are the setback lines, front, side, and rear. And then the blue is the proposed patio that we're, that we're proposing and seeking the variance for. So as you can see, the, the shallow depth of the property resulted in the house being very near the rear yard setback to begin with. It's where we're, before we started the construction project that we're doing now, the back of the house was nine feet from the setback line. We've done a seven-and-a-half-foot addition with a little bay so that the present addition is going right to the setback line. There was an existing patio of the same size, approximately 12 feet by 20 feet, on the rear of the existing house. That patio was in poor condition and there's a photograph of it there. And so had to be taken out and replaced. That patio already was two-and-a-half feet into the setback to begin with. So we felt that we could come and request the variance to construct an equally-sized patio on the rear of the, the new addition. The house is, itself is very shallow. It's only 24 feet deep. And the kitchen at the back of the house was only 11 feet in depth. And one of the projects we're trying to accomplish with the addition we're doing is increasing the depth of the kitchen. The, there's a family room that was existing adjacent to the kitchen and that was built on a breezeway, original breezeway back in the 1950s. And that family room was therefore about 10 feet wide and 20 feet deep, replicating the breezeway next to the original one-car garage. So very small spaces that they had for kitchen and family room. So a principal part of the addition that we're doing is expanding the, the kitchen and the, and the family room space. But again, because of the relatively shallow lot coming up against that rear setback. The photographs I've given you are of the rear yard and there's a key plan, both a blow-up of the site plan which keys in the photographs you have. And the principal element is that there's a heavily, already heavily vegetated boundary between this property and the property behind them. Both, I think, from original plantings done by prior owners as well as, I understand, the current owner has also added plantings to that. And just to quickly go through, photos one, two, and three are roughly, as you can see, from the upper right-side corner of the proposed patio. Looking at that vegetative buffer along the property line, as you can see, it's, it's very dense, hardly at all that you can even see the, the house behind there.
I'm sorry, could I just ask?
Sure.
Is the house behind there that you're referring to?
Yes.
Is that at Four Ludlow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and you might be able to tell from the site plan. Four Ludlow accesses, reason it's got a Ludlow Drive address, even though this lot is the corner lot, is there's an easement for their driveway to go in. And even though they front onto Seven Bridges Road, they have a Ludlow Drive address. So again, just back to the photos, one, two, and three show that rear veget- the vegetative buffer behind the patio. And I would even point out that you see that there's a lot of landscaping that was installed even by the prior owner. So there really isn't a rear yard. The patio becomes their, their usable space. And this would be space that they would have the dining table on, outdoor dining table and, and that kind of activity. Photograph five shows the original patio that has now been demolished and, again, was not in good condition. Photograph six and seven show, or six is from another patio behind the living room, an existing patio that has a component that also extends into the rear yard by about four, rear setback by about four-and-a-half feet. And that's original, all of these things were original to the 1930s house. And photo seven shows the, the view from the rear yard looking back at the back of the house with that, that patio. There was some consideration in envisioning this project, given the two patios. We had some consideration of potentially using the, the other existing patio behind the living room as the, you know, for dining table and those other features. But it's a good distance from the kitchen and functionally, that wouldn't work well for, you know, a common type of dining, outdoor dining area associated with the kitchen and a family room. So preference to be able to reconstruct this, this patio. The, give me a second, I have a couple of other notes. Make reference to, there, the distance between, just maybe some random notes. The distance between the two houses is about 100 feet. Both are about 50 feet from the rear property line. Most all of the vegetation that you see in those photographs are on the six Ludlow Drive, the applicant's property. As I mentioned, they have added plantings in there to help increase the, the screening. The, there was reference in the letter by the neighbor about septic work. Yes, the current owner is looking at potentially increasing their septic system, possibility of adding a bedroom if they can. And certainly, all of that is as of right as any property owner would be able to do. Unless I'm forgetting anything. So in summary, we think that, given that this proposed patio is a replacement of an existing patio that was of the same size and the same location, that there is no change in the, the character of the neighborhood. There is no way to achieve the same benefit, given trying to put it in proximity to the kitchen and the family room for that function. The variance is not substantial. The patio represents about three-and-a-half percent of the rear yard setback area, you know, from end to end of the house. Even though it's a 10-foot, requesting a 10-foot variance to the actual setback, the amount of patio area is very small. Also that it's a, it's an at-grade patio. It's not completely on grade. There will be a step up at least to finalizing grades behind there, but relatively at grade. So very little visual impact from the patio itself. So I feel that there's no negative effects on the neighborhood. And then, you know, essentially, not a self-created hardship because the, the shallow depth of the property and the proximity of the back of the house to the setback line made it, makes it impossible to have a normally-sized patio without exceeding the setback line.
Was the original patio that this is replacing, is that legal nonconforming?
Correct, it was built with the original house in the 30s.
Okay, so when it was built, it was legal?
Yes, right.
And this is basically just going in the same place as the patio, that patio that was.
I think you can see on the site plan, I've dashed in, left dashed in, the original patio with the new one.
I'm looking at your picture number seven.
Okay.
How does the new patio differ or is the same from this patio?
Seven is of the patio behind the living room. If you look at the site plan, you'll see where the numbers are keyed in. So you're looking at the back of the house behind the living room. That's an existing patio that's remaining. And so the.
So it's staying?
Correct, right. And, and so we're proposing the new patio behind the kitchen. And if you can tell there, I think there's still dashed in the original patio with the little curved stair on it and then where the new patio is in proximity.
So basically, you're going out another eight feet?
Correct. Yeah, we're actually, it's nine-feet encroachment to the edge of the patio. We requested 10 feet just in case, you know, some, somebody does something a little off.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
Yes.
Yes, please come forward.
Can I use that table up, sir?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you so much. I sound a little bit new to this.
So, so wait. I'm, 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 I doubt that. Let me just get my phone. I'm the neighbor at Four Ludlow, my wife and I.
Okay, you're going to start by telling us your name.
My name is Jack Brandon, my wife is Toby Brandon. We reside at Four Ludlow Drive in Chappaqua. We're the neighbor that abuts their house. I think it's the southwest part of our property. Just so I understand what the format is, do I get to just give you my side of it? What I think, or did you want to ask me the, something from the letter?
So, Mr. Brandon, we have, we have your letter.
Sure.
Everybody on the board has reviewed that. Council's reviewed it.
How do I write?
The building department has reviewed it. So it, it isn't necessary for you to recite the letter to us? Perhaps you want to highlight for us what you think is most important about the proposed.
Right, before I, before I do that, I'm, I'm not going to be long. I, I know that, Mr. Spade?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Spade showed you pictures. I didn't have time to take a whole lot of pictures, but that, I know there was a reference to a, in essence, a berm, a vegetation, I think it was called, between our property and the back of the right.
Maybe just one of.
Hang on. See those?
Right, that's.
That's their side, right, okay. So let me show this to you from our side when it isn't the summer because it's a non-desiduous berm. So from my patio, which I just want to mention, let me just pass this around so you can see. There's snow on the ground. That's their house. That in essence is the, the greenery between, that would cut off, say, the view of their patio and the back of their home from ours. So the seasonality of the berm is A, contingent upon the season, all right, or the protection of it, and B, contingent upon us. Because that vegetation, if, once it's gone, whatever it is they have on their side isn't blocking our view, nor is it even blocking sound from the property. That's just one point I wanted to make.
Could I just make a?
Absolutely.
Just a comment.
I get my phone back? Okay, good.
And this isn't a debate. I just wanted to offer a, a comment on that. So I, I understand that, you know, a neighbor's use of their patio had some impact on neighbors, neighborhood, and so forth.
Yes.
But of course, during the winter, the picture that you showed us, people generally are not out on their patio having parties or barbecuing or entertaining or whatever the case might be, so.
Certainly, can I address that?
Yeah.
I don't want to belabor it, but.
Sure.
That picture was taken in the winter, but deciduous trees don't hold their leaves through the fall. So those trees are populated by leaves. And again, I'm not an arborist. Those trees are populated by, by trees pretty much two to three months of the year. We use that patio year-round, you're right. In the dead of winter, it's the last place you want to be. But for most of the rest of the year, my wife and I both, especially my wife, we are out on my patios. And before I just continue, I'm not an architect, I haven't done anything to scale. But this is what I see from my house. Let me just give you this, if you don't mind. If you dare with me. This is the view of my house. Or from my house, so you have a sense of what our perspective is. When I refer to patios, sorry, when I refer to patios, patio one and patio two are ours. Patio one is the one that's on the other side of my driveway from where the Ludlow six property exists. You have the maps. Okay, we have erected a small little white, a six-foot white fence with a lattice work on top alongside that patio just so that we don't see or hear for the best that we can the neighboring house and the, and whatever it is they're doing in the back. We have also, if you look, we have patio two. Now, these are modest brick patios, they're not even st- they're not even filled in, they're laid brick. We have a garden that we've erected right outside between the two patios, sort of, kind of like shoe-worst in, that is overgrown, as is the berm that we have on the side because we'd love to prune that if we could, all right? So that patio two is protected from view and sound from the house along the side as well. If that garden was gone or if we pruned it down and if you, if you visit the site, which I might recommend that you do, you will see that the view of their home is in direct line of sight, both from patio one and patio two. And specifically in patio one, we hear them all the time. And we don't begrudge them from enjoying their backyard.
Look, we understand all of that. The fact, though, that you can see their house or some portion of the house at any time of the year, that's not really why we're here to discuss this, right? This is about the extension of, or replacement of, an exten- an extension of a patio that exists today.
So let me address that. I'm happy to address that if you would, Ron, all right? So 10-foot, I, you know, I, just to preempt what I know you guys are going to do, which is to go over this code and go by point by point on what this does or does not do. And I understand that. If you would allow me, I just want to very quickly just say that, sort of go over my attitude about the five points so you just see where I stand.
Could I just, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Could I just ask this, though, before you go through that? Is there some remediation in your mind, other than the board? Is there some remediation, in your mind, other than the board turning down the applicant's request, that would make this more tolerable for you? So by that, I mean, is there something more? I mean, you've, you've shown us pictures of plantings and so forth. Is there something more that the applicant could do in terms of screening, you know, evergreen screening, that would address your issue?
So, I, you know, I anticipated that you might, you might ask that question, and I appreciate the sentiment of it, and I'm not saying that there wouldn't be something that could be done to remediate. But I'd rather not get to that point right now, because our objective would be for them to not build it. If you determine that that's not realistic, for whatever the reason, then certainly we would entertain the possibility. It could only make it better and not worse. But I would rather at least see if there's any chance that we don't build this, that this variance not be granted. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're, what you're saying. One thing I would say about that, though, is...
Yes, sir.
This really isn't a two-stage process, the, the way, you know, you've described it.
I understand.
So, you know, we need to address this in its totality, and, and that's one of the reasons why I asked about that.
And I appreciate the question. And so, if that's what you decide, you know, we've lived here for 30 years, we have to live by the rule of the, you know, of the board.
Well, but you're, I'm asking for your input.
My input would be that anything that would mitigate the noise and the sound, the sound and the view would be better than it would be without it. That's my, I mean, that's fairly common sense.
Can I just put something in?
Yes, sir.
Quickly. We're talking about patio, ungrade patio, not in addition to a house, right? And that there would be a big bolt in the fridge and everywhere.
Right.
If we were to deny this application, and the applicant would move out into his back lawn, dining room table, chairs, et cetera, et cetera, you would still have the same result as if the patio was there. So you, we are, tonight, you have an opportunity tonight to, well, not say force us, but advise us and, and, and kind of tell us that there are some kinds of mitigation that you would be more comfortable with, such as, as our chairman said, some kind of evergreen screening, or maybe a combo of a fence and a screening, or something like that, which would protect you. If you, if we deny this application, and, and they decide to use their backyard for party time, and move their dining room table outside in the, in the good weather, on the grass, that's, they have every right to do that.
Sure.
So you have an opportunity now to protect yourself. And we have an opportunity to make the applicant happy if we decide to grant. I'm not saying that we will or we won't, but if it should go in that direction, we could try to make everybody happy. Maybe not everybody totally happy, you a little happy, them a little happy, and we don't have anybody that's extremely happy and somebody that's extremely angry. So, well, let's try to get together and, you know, we, we are all neighbors in this town, and let's try to be neighborly and mitigate the, the circumstances to the best of our ability, for all concern, not just you and not just the applicant. So, I mean, I think, I think you should put that into your mind.
Oh, it's in my mind now.
Okay.
Well, certainly then, we would, you know, on the advice of the board, we certainly would have to entertain that. And again, we would want to be assured that, you know, whatever, whatever the borders or barriers are that have been put up meet with our approval, is, you know, that it, it doesn't look unsightly, because we have to look at it. So if it's a matter of evergreens or a matter of fence, we'd at least like to know about it, and at least like to have some input. Is that fair? Is that the way it's normally done? That, but, so I suppose there's no sense in like going further on this?
I'm sorry, I would have one thing.
Yes, sir.
It's not automatic that you get this veto right. So, you know, we're gonna hear from...
I'm requesting it.
Okay. We're, we're gonna hear from the architect again in one second, to get his reaction to this. And he may not be able to speak for the property owner. So, go ahead, finish your thought, Ben.
Just before I, just before I leave, because I would feel I was doing myself a disservice and my wife a disservice, I just want to make five points, and then you'll make your determination, and very quickly. With respect to point one in the code that says whether an undesirable change will be produced, and it will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, my letter speaks to that point, our attitude about that. With respect to the second point, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, depends on how you define benefit. I think they have the benefit of the usage of the backyard without necessarily having to extend a structure 10-foot closer to me. If by benefit they mean enjoyment and use of their backyard, and not simply putting in a stone structure, they also have another patio as-is. And I'm not sure, I may have missed it, I'm not sure how, having something that's already in violation is in some sense a permission slip to extend it out even further. I, I must have misunderstood that part of the conversation, about the current, the patios that were built originally were...
That was, that's pre-existing. It is compliant.
It is compliant, okay. The third one, whether the request is variant, is substantial. From our point of view, on our side of the property, it's a 20% deduction of the buffer. It's a 50% var, it's a 50-foot variance. It's 10 feet less. So as far as we're concerned, from our point of view, that's material. With respect to the proposed variance having an adverse or impact on the neighborhood, we can't speak to that environmentally. That's the leach field issue that may come up at some other point. And whether or not the alleged difficulty was self-created, I don't see how this can be seen as anything else but self-created, irrespective of the depth of the house, which our house is also narrow. The architect's plan, gave a plan, it was approved, the plans went forward, and as a result of the plans that were approved, they are now applying for, for a 10-foot variance. They can find another place to put it, or they could have narrowed their room when they extended it. That was a plan issue. In our estimation, that's self-created. So, and I know that that's not just positive, I know that, that that's not gonna say, well, there you go. But from our point of view, for these reasons, our major, our primary preference would be not to have this built, but it, we certainly would appreciate the board doing something about creating a barrier. If that's our only option, we would greatly appreciate that. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. So, I don't know in what position you are to speak to this or not, but...
Sure. I certainly have some conversation with the owner about the, you know, possibilities. Certainly, from their perspective, and, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, this is as vegetated of a boundary between two properties as you'll find. You know, I, I know that this board looks for screening when they're, when people are getting variances, and this is, is as well-screened as you could have had without ever, you know, somebody intentionally planting it that way. So, we certainly believe that the existing vegetation works well. The existing vegetation is evergreen, and the last 11-by-17 photo is the Google Earth, or no, actually, sorry, the second one, the 11-by-17 size, shows the, the one behind the drawn plane. 11 was, that one, right, the, how, Harvey has it. That shows, you know, that's a wintertime, you know, aerial view that shows which plantings are evergreen and which, and which are deciduous. So, my opinion is it's a heavily landscaped, screened area with evergreen plantings. Third point would be that this part of the property is the most screened relative to the rear yard. And hopefully, as you see in the photograph, from the living room patio looking out, there's a much clearer view to the neighbor's home. And so where the, you know, the applicants, they have to use that living room patio for dining and those other functions, which they certainly can do, you know, it's closer and would have a more direct impact on the neighbor than this location would. So, we, we do feel strongly that, you know, it's well-screened, it's the right place to put it, and it would have no new impact to the neighbor than the prior patio had in, in any event. And again, the way the property is landscaped presently, there is no other use of that yard beyond the patio, it's all got bushes and other kinds of plantings in it. So, as opposed to the area behind the living, beyond the living room patio, which is a lawn area. So, certainly think that it's a, as ideal condition for this location as, as you could have. So, is there any other questions you have for me?
So, which is the property that...
This one.
So what is that?
That's exactly right.
So, is this the house?
Yes.
How does that get to be on Ludlow?
Uh, they have an easement...
An easement, this is a driveway.
Here, on your plan, there, that driveway is an easement across Sixth Ludlow.
But they face seven bridges.
So the easement's actually on Sixth Ludlow?
Correct. Right.
Where is the easement? Can you show us?
Uh, the driveway at the bottom here.
This one?
That driveway is access to that lot.
Yes, sir.
Okay, here's where...
Am I right, by the way, that it's an easement?
Yes.
Part of the, part of the, the lower part, I, it goes up to a certain point, is, is an easement in the deed.
Okay.
Yes. The lower, as you enter.
Right. Okay.
So Billy, the patio that you're planning on, again, the elevation of the actual patio is what, would you say?
About a foot and a half off the ground.
Off the ground.
Right.
You're not planning any walls or anything?
No. Right. Just steps, you know, maybe two steps down on the lower side, and one step down on the, on the uphill side, and similar, same condition that the existing patio was, as you can see.
Here's, here's what I, here's what I feel about this. It's the applicant's contention that it's already screened.
Yeah.
It's well-screened.
Right.
But I would like to memorialize the screening so that it's, it could, it becomes part of our variance.
Okay.
In order to do that, what I'd like you to do is, and I, you could all say yes or no to me, whatever you like, is come back to us again with a planting plan, showing what's there, and adding whatever's necessary to fill in the blanks that would occur in the wintertime, to show us what kind of effect that would have on the, on the screening to protect the neighbor. And I'm, I'm not saying that we will definitely grant or, or not grant in, in that case, but I think if, if we, if we do grant in any case, we do need to have something memorialized that it becomes part of the variance, and becomes, uh, something that has to be maintained in perpetuity for the protection of the neighbor. So, you're saying that there's plenty there now? I'm not so sure. I've seen there's evergreens, but this, it's not all evergreen.
Yeah.
There may be ways in the wintertime that allow the neighbor to feel like he's being put upon by what he sees and what he hears. So, it's, it's my suggestion to come back, to come back with us with a thoroughly designed planting plan, showing what the end result will be, and how it's gonna protect the neighbor, so that we can make an informed decision as to whether or not we want to grant this variance.
Um, the only retort I would have to that is, given it's so heavily vegetated, I, you know, and I'm not a landscape architect, but I've had some dealings with that, it's not possible to add plantings in underneath the canopy of the vegetation that's there. So, and again, as you see from the photographs, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a deep zone of planting.
So maybe some deciduous material has to be removed to allow some, some evergreen in there, or, as I said earlier, possibly a section of fence here and there to, to skillfully blend it in, not some thing just thrown there, of course, to, to make it look good from your client's viewpoint, and also to protect the neighbor. And I, you know, I'm, I'm not a landscape architect either. I'm just throwing this out because I think that we, we should do the best we can to alleviate the neighbor's concerns, while still understanding that your client has a difficult situation. They have a funny-looking lot, they have a very limited space to use, and I would like to see them to be able to use it as, as much as possible, and still protect their, their neighbors from what they consider to be an adverse effect.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm sure my colleagues may have other ideas, I'm just throwing this out for everyone to think about.
Yeah, I, I just feel like there's, there's a practical difficulty with trying to add landscaping to that very heavily vegetated zone already. And, and the idea of taking out trees to plant other ones, you know, my first thought is that might put us in a worse spot.
It might be worse, yeah.
Maybe taking things out that screen it now, and then...
That's why I'm saying, maybe we should have, have a landscape architect.
Mr. Brandon showed us a picture, though, in the wintertime where you could get your client's house.
You can see the house. I mean, we're, again, we're talking about a patio, right? And the fact that the, presumably, the objection would be noise from the use of the patio, the, you know, they have another patio, they can use the yard, there's no di, you know, again, in my opinion, there's no difference in the noise that could be created from their use of their yard, whether that this patio is there or not, or whether there's...
They have more to use the patio than the yard.
Yeah.
Let's, let's be honest about that.
Sure.
If there's a patio there, they're gonna use it.
Right. And there, if there's not this patio, they're gonna use that other patio that will be more impactful. And, you know, you see the photograph, you see the neighbor's house much more clearly from that patio than you do from the proposed patio. So, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, right? You know, you know, but, you know, we've talked about it, and, and again, I've, you know, I've been in the situation where we've proposed, you know, something needing a variance, and there's hardly any vegetation, right? There's hardly any screening. Totally understand the, the purpose of trying to add that. I just feel like in this circumstance, it's gonna be really hard to add anything that makes sense, that would have any impact of any nature. You hardly can see the house. You have to, I think, through, look through the trees there to be able to see the house. That won't change the issue of noise, right?
Maybe a fence. Maybe a fence.
Yeah.
A green fence?
But we can't, even for purposes of memorializing what's there now, I think Tony might have a, a good idea.
Yeah.
It may be that after it's, after the arborist tells us what's there...
Okay.
And if he, if he, if in his opinion, he doesn't think anything can be added, you can tell us that also.
Right. Understood.
But at least, if we have that information, we can then memorialize what's there. And that's, if that's the best situation, then it's fine.
Right. I mean, you're, you're, you, I understand, you know, you are relying on that existing vegetation, and somebody else comes along and decides they want to go all the way to the property line, then all of that vegetation could go, right? So, I understand that, certainly understand that perspective. There was a timing question then, because certainly they would love to proceed with the project. You're not meeting in August, so that means not till September, and that means not till October for, you know, being able to move forward on it. So, if there was any way you thought to be able to grant it in, 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 in a condition to come back, I don't know if that's something you do, but just to throw that out there.
I don't see how that can happen, because if we, if we grant it conditionally, and you come back and we say, no, that's no good, now we can't take the granting away.
Right.
Or we're stuck.
Understood.
Okay. It just happens to be, like you said, it's, it's just that time of the year where we take a month off.
Right. Right, right, right. Understood.
With pay, of course, you know, we get paid.
Yeah.
Should've been here in my... I think Mrs. Brandon wanted to speak.
Sure, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Would, would you mind?
No. Please come forward.
Yeah, definitely.
My wife has something. The first thing I would say, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you.
The first thing I would say is that it just occurs, it, it should be self-evident right now that there's been pushback more on the other side than there is on our side about doing some sort of a berm. And I suspect that it may have something to do with the timing of the architectural, you know, the construction and whatnot. While I know that that might be material to the architect, that isn't a concern of ours. You recognize, I think rightly, that we disagree on whether or not there is a sufficient berm all year-round, and I'm not just talking about the winter, the, the architect and I. You acknowledge that there may be a way of compromising. We're open to that. We, we hear you. What I'm hearing here is we would rather not compromise. And that's worrisome to us. All right? Just so you know.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Spade is not the property owner.
Understood.
Don't take offense. Okay? This is a process, and we, as a community, will find a solution for this, okay?
My wife, my wife has.
You could introduce yourself, please.
Toby Brandon.
Yes.
So, I, I use that patio a lot, and I will tell you that in the months of April, May, and a good part of June, there is almost no berm, and then, of course, when the leaves fall off in the fall. I work at home, and I take my breaks out on the patio, and it's a very big part of why I enjoy my home. So, I am best able, I think, to speak for the fact that there really is no very limited berm there. And I just want to correct something about the other patio. The prior owners used the other patio, which is off of the living room, that the existing patio. It pretty much faces our garage and our side door. There's really no living space, so we've had no impact from their use of the other patio. So I just want to, I just wanted to make those two points. One, with respect to the berm, my husband showed you the winter picture, but that's really just to show that it's mostly not evergreens, and I, I don't see any reason why a berm of evergreens couldn't be put up.
At the very least.
It seems, seems pretty easy.
Okay. We understand.
Solution.
We understand your position. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Bill, you're going to come back and see us?
Okay. And the return would be with an arborist plan of, or is it, well, whatever the arborist recommends in terms of memorializing existing vegetation, if they feel that they can supplement it, certainly that would be part of it.
Yes.
But make the minimum that's memorializing what's there.
Yes.
Okay.
I would suggest you recommend to the arborist that he do as much as possible.
Yeah, I will.
Even height, I think height, it's not just the capacity of it, I think we have to consider the height as well.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
And a possible fence as well, if that's necessary.
Okay.
We're open to any and all suggestions, so.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you want to hang on to your materials there?
We're going to-
Yeah.
Okay. Keep it close to us.
Will we be notified, or how do we find out?
You just know, you just found out now. September.
September.
See you in September.
Fourth Wednesday in September, the fourth Wednesday in September, right?
Thank you so much.
Hey, Bill, just if the opportunity presents itself, if there's an opportunity for there to be some discussion with the neighbor before the next meeting, it would, it may be helpful.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. You ready for the next one?
Yes.
Laurie?
Hi.
Good evening. My name's Chris Langenke. I'm here with Burke Energy on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. LaHere. We're applying for a rear yard variance of approximately 14 feet for a generator location. The reason for the variance is the property is unique in the fact that the now side of the home, originally, I think, was the front of the home, architecturally and in actuality. So, the distance from the structure of the house to the property line is 42.29 feet, and when we placed the generator five feet off of the house, that reduces us down to approximately, you know, give or take 36 feet, which is why we're requesting the 14-foot variance. The generator would be placed in a location that is heavily screened from the only neighbor on that side of the property. There's a very tall, very thick, dense row of pine, trees and bushes. Where the generator itself would be located, there is a abundance of vegetation that the homeowner has bordering their garden. We like the location because it keeps in form with the other mechanicals of the house, such as two air conditioning condensers, and that, that's really why we're asking for the variance for that particular location.
So the placement of the generator is as close to the house as code permits, is that correct?
Correct.
How is the generator going to be powered?
Propane.
And where would the tanks be located?
So the tanks would be 10 feet off the generator, screened by a fence and some bushes.
There are above-ground tanks?
Correct.
How many house, what size tank?
120 gallon.
How many?
Uh, I believe three.
Three 120s?
Yes, sir.
Let the record show that there is no one who's appeared to speak in opposition to this application.
Have you heard anything from the neighbors, Tom or Todd?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm good.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make the motion that the application of Joshua LaHere for a 14-foot rear yard variance for the installation of a 12KW generator, be approved for the following reasons. Location-wise, this is the best place for the generator with regard to the other mechanicals that, that are supplied to the residence. Any of the barriers are not, you know, the characters of the neighborhood, there is really no other location suitable for this generator that would work mechanically, or even aesthetically, for that matter. In this particular instance, this is not a substantial requested variance. This is a self-created hardship in that they didn't have to have a generator at all if they even want one, but they want one and they're, they're requiring a, a variance for it. Even though the hardship is self-created, it should not be dispositive, or the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any detriment to the neighborhood or to the town itself. Will we need a final survey as to the location of that generator, Tom?
We generally don't require one for a generator.
Okay, so we don't need a final survey, just for those reasons, we should go. Six months to start, one year to finish.
Okay.
I second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you. Have your variance.
Thank you very much, Bill.
You're welcome. I move that we adopt the meeting minutes for the June 27th meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
I have to understand, I haven't seen the minutes.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get them.
It's my fault. I've been busy, I didn't look at your email.
We're off.